Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees to Order. I'd like to announce first that we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters after the, our first part of our public meeting. And following our executive session, we expect to reconvene in a brief public, second public session. I'd like to read the following notice which has been distributed. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. Public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in each of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications are distributed to Board members. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. University may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. I would like to request that everyone take a moment to switch off his or her cellphone. Thank you. CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed at the CUNY website. It is my great pleasure to congratulate Merrill H. Tish, who was recently elected as Chancellor of the New York State Board of Regents by a unanimous vote. We are all aware of her unwavering and strong support for CUNY over many years and all of us, I know I speak for the Chancellor and all of us in saying how much we look forward to working with Merrill Tish. I would also like to congratulate Trustee Hugo Morales on being presented with a 2009 Mother Teresa de Calcutta Husband Father of the Year Award from the Dominican Study Community Services International Women's Month Celebration Event on March 29th. Congratulations. The Board held its Staten Island Borough Hearing at College of Staten Island Center for the Arts Recital Hall on Monday, March 9, 2009. Vice Chairman Philip Berry chaired the meeting, which was attended by Trustees Rita DiMartino and Kathleen Pacilli, Chancellor Matthew Goldstein, members of the Chancellery, and College of Staten Island President Tomas Morales. The Board held its Queens Borough Hearing at the Queens Borough Hall on Monday, April 20, 2009. Trustee Wellington Chen chaired this meeting, which was attended by Trustees Rita DiMartino and Simone Lamont, Chancellor Matthew Goldstein, members of the Chancellery, and CUNY's Queens College Presidents and Representatives. Summaries of the proceedings of both hearings have been circulated to the trustees and the Chancellor's Cabinet and transcripts are available in the Office of the Secretary. The Board will hold its next Borough Hearing in the Bronx on Monday, June 15, 2009 at Ostos Community College. It is a great sadness that I note the passing of New York State Senator John J. Markey, who passed away yesterday, April 26. He was a true giant in public service. We honored Senator Markey in June of 2006 by dedicating a major building on the College of Staten Island campus housing the History and Political Science Departments in his name. At that time, the Senator had just completed 50 years of public service, during which time he played a central role in helping the university obtain the Willowbrook Site from the state for the College of Staten Island campus and in sponsoring legislation to found CSI as a senior college. Later, he did the same for the New York City College of Technology. Also, Senator Markey donated his papers to the archives and collections of CSI, creating a repository for historic work of public leaders in New York State. While he will forever be identified as a great champion of the College of Staten Island, Senator Markey was also uniquely sensitive to CUNY's overall educational mission and its importance in the national marketplace of public higher education. Senator Markey was the original sponsor of the SEEK program legislation, which became state law, as well as for legislation to permit CUNY student public assistance recipients to perform their workfare responsibilities near or on their campus of enrollment. He was also the chief sponsor of the original legislation to separate CUNY's community colleges from SUNY's jurisdiction. The list goes on and on, but these are just a few examples of Senator Markey's unique dedication to CUNY and to the public. He will be sorely missed. It is also with great sadness that I note the passing of Dr. John Hope Franklin earlier this month. We will remember with pride and gratitude Dr. Franklin's numerous contributions to our country as a preeminent American historian and to this university as a professor and department chairman at Brooklyn College. As the keynote speaker at CUNY's first Blackmail Initiative Conference, he lent his extraordinary distinction to our fledgling program. He will be sorely missed. Planning has been initiated for an appropriate event at the university to honor and to help continue the legacy of Dr. Franklin and where we will have an opportunity to reflect further about his values and extraordinary achievements. On a happy note, the Baruch College Men's Volleyball Team finished the 2009 season ranked number 11 in the final poll of the American Volleyball Coaches Association. This ranking, this ranking is the highest ever for Baruch on the National NCAA Division III level. The Baruch Bearcats had a record 35 wins and the CUNY Championship where they beat Hunter College 3 to 1 in front of over 1,000 fans. The Hunter Hawks won their second consecutive Eastern College Athletic Conference Championship by beating the Stevenson Mustangs 3-0 on their home floor in Stevenson, Maryland. I'd like to now call on Trustee Rita DiMartino to announce college and faculty honors.
Several professors CUNY-wide have been awarded prestigious Guggenheim Fellowships. Medgar Evers College Assistant Professor of English, Thomas Bradshaw; Hunter College and Graduate Center Associate Professor of History, Benjamin Carter Het; Hunter College Associate Professor of Anthropology, Jonathan H. Shannon; Lehman College Associate Professor of Anthropology, Victoria Sanford; Queens College and Graduate Center Associate Professor of Media Studies, Heather Hendershot; and Baruch College and Graduate Center Associate Professor in Immigration Studies, Sociology, and Public Affairs, Robert Courtney Smith. Congratulations to all. Medgar Evers College Assistant Professor of English, Stephen Nardi, was awarded a 2009-2010 Fulbright Grant while Medgar Evers College Assistant Professor of English, Natasha Gordon Chepemberay, was awarded her second Fulbright Grant, a 2009-2010 Fellowship. Brooklyn College Professor of Sociology, Alex Vitale, also won a Fulbright Scholarship to study policing in South Korea. Congratulations to all. Graduate Center Distinguished Professor of French, English, and Comparative Literature, Mary Ann Cowes, and Distinguished Professor of Architecture and Director of the Graduate Urban Design Program at the City College of New York, Michael Sorkin, were recently elected to the 2009 Class of Fellows of the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. Congratulations. Kingsborough Community College's Developmental English Program Team, led by Professor Eileen Ferretti, was the recipient of the Diana Hacker Two-Year College English Association Outstanding Program in English Award, which was cosponsored by Bedford St. Martin's Press. Congratulations, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I don't want to let this moment pass without making an observation. The six CUNY Guggenheim Fellowship winners this year is not only the highest number in the history of the university, but is tied for the highest number at any university with Johns Hopkins and Princeton. I think it's a remarkable manifestation of the tremendous excellence that has gone into the building of the faculty over the last particularly six or seven years, and it is a very strong and profound recognition of the academic quality of this faculty that we would be tied for first in Guggenheim Fellowship. May I call on Trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may preface my remarks first with also that I'm very saddened by the death of Senator Markey. I knew him since I was a child when he ran against my cousin Albert Maniscalco for Borough President in Staten Island and lost. So that started a wonderful friendship. What I wanted to say today was with the concurrence of Trustee DiMartino, I have asked State Senator Andrew Lanza from Staten Island to sponsor a bill for the state legislature to establish a John Markey Scholarship for CUNY students. Now I'll give my remarks.
Thank you.
Trustee, excuse me, the City College Junior and International Studies Major and recent veteran, Don Gomez, was selected for the highly competitive Harry S. Truman Scholarship. We wish to congratulate him. Several students CUNY-wide were named Barry M. Goldwater Scholars, Hunter College Junior and Biological Science Majors, Elena Lakeman, and Queens College Students Computer Science Major Yitzhak Lockerman, and Psychology and Neuroscience Major, Media Studies Minor Lamar Whaley. Congratulations to each of you. Ten students CUNY-wide were winners of the Jeanette K. Watson Fellows, class of 2011. They are Tyler Altman, Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College, Havera Hashimi, Brooklyn College, Joyce Lee Gino, Macaulay Honors College at Lehman College, Brian Caitman, Macaulay Honors College at the College of Staten Island, Michael Meslowski, College of Staten Island, Christine Pejo, Brooklyn College, Eric Polanco, the City College of New York, Ilya Riven, Macaulay Honors College at Brooklyn College, Bing Xiao, Macaulay Honors College at City College of New York, Shushanta Shinga, Macaulay Honors College at Lehman College. Congratulations to you all. CUNY-wide, there were five National Science Foundation Graduate Fellowships for 2009. Jay Hyon, a graduate, and David Bauer, a student at the Macaulay Honors College at the City College of New York, Amy Cologne of Hunter College, Christopher Negron of City College of New York, and Shivan Powers of Brooklyn College. Congratulations. Four Macaulay Honors College students have been selected New York City Urban Fellows. They are Chunchak Doma, Macaulay Honors College at Lehman College, Stacy Kurkulova, Macaulay Honors College at Baruch College, Longtron and Catherine Zinnell, Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College. Hunter College Class of 1951 alumna Mildred Dressenhaus has won the prestigious Van Devar Bush Award by the National Science Board. Recent Hunter graduate Matthew Willis received a Fulbright Grant. Hunter's Model United Nations Team did it again, taking top honors at the National Model, UN making Hunter College one of the top five award winners among the 300 colleges competing. Congratulations all. Baruch College and Dollars and Cents Magazine won a Gold Crown Award, the top prize for college magazines from Columbia Scholastic Press Association. Dollars and Cents is the only student-run publication in the CUNY and SUNY systems and the only one in the New York metropolitan area to win a Crown Award. City College Senior and English Honors Program Student Kimberly Page Young was selected a Jacob Javits Fellow for the 2009-2010 Academic Year. Congratulations. And finally, Queensborough Community College Student Jacqueline Hackett of the college's Mock Trial Team participating in the 2009 Atlantic Regional Tournament of the American Mock Trial Association was awarded an All Region Witness Award. Congratulations. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have in your calendar book at the table a list of grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the February 23, 2009 meeting. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report on recent activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo your very eloquent remarks and those of Trustee Pacilli about Senator John Markey, who was a wonderful friend of mine, but more importantly, a very, very strong advocate over the entire history of his distinguished time in the state legislature for CUNY, and we certainly will miss him. And of course, John Hope Franklin, who was an enormous force in this country, his extraordinary book From Slavery to Freedom, if you have not read it, it is really required reading. He was an extraordinary man, and I remember with great clarity when I had called him and asked him to be the keynote speaker at the invocation of the Blackmail Initiative and how eloquent and how forceful he spoke. He was a great American. Mr. Chairman, I just want to lift this latest magazine Salute to Scholars, which all of you have at your desk. It makes wonderful reading, and there's a fabulous picture of Ken Olden, the founding dean of our School of Public Health that is worth reading as well. Ken, you really look very animated in this, and I congratulate Mike Arena in particular, who reports to Jay Hirschenson, who is really the driving force behind this very attractive magazine. This is the first meeting since February 23, when we met last as a Board, and I do want to thank the Executive Committee for coming together on April 6 on a number of time-sensitive matters which have found themselves in the Board calendar this evening. Let me briefly touch on some budget issues, starting with the state budget. The '09-'10 state budget, as all of you know, was adopted in early April. All of the trustees and certainly the presidents received an analysis of the approved action, so I'm not going to go over that here. The budget includes restoration of the lump sum cut to the senior colleges, which was about $18 million, restoration, full restoration of community college aid, restoration of the TAP cuts, except the one on pension calculations, and the approval of the governor's capital recommendations. Especially gratifying was the resolution of Medgar Evers College's status as a now full senior college with respect to capital spending, thereby eliminating the required 50 percent match by the city for any action taken by the state. Edison, it was a long battle, but we finally got that done. The adopted budget utilized about $18 million in federal stimulus funds to restore the proposed 10 percent reduction in community college-based aid. I will talk a little about the Recovery Act that was signed by the President, and the presidents were, before this meeting, briefed on the components of that stimulus package. Overall, the adopted budget provides for short-term stability at best, largely fueled by these stimulus dollars. I do want to put a cautionary signal up, you've heard me say this before, we cannot be complacent here at this university, in part because of the way in which so many holes were filled by the stimulus money. Until some of the structural issues are addressed, I lament that I believe that over time we're going to see some very, very choppy waters ahead for New York State and then by extension what would happen to the university, so that we need to be constantly vigilant over the next year to year and a half to ensure that this university is moving in a way and not placed in harm's way. I'm pleased to join our Chairman in congratulating Merrill Tish. He is correct that she is a friend of longstanding and I think is going to do remarkable work as the Chancellor of the State University of New York. Richard Mills, the Commissioner, who is the Executive Director, the Commissioner for Education in the State of New York, has tendered his resignation. There is a committee now established to find his replacement, and for the record, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say how closely we worked with Richard Mills, who was always there for us when this university needed somebody to stand up and say the right things. I'm delighted to inform you, although this was communicated in writing to you, that the New York State Board of Regents approved unanimously the CUNY's 2008-2012 Master Plan at its March meeting, and I'd like to thank various university constituents for carrying the ball. Lexa Logue, who was the lead person to talk about the Master Plan, did a great job and congratulations in helping us in that important matter. The recent passing and subsequent signing into law by Governor Patterson amends the New York State education law to require college campuses to provide incoming students with information about sexual assault, domestic violence, and stalking prevention. The CUNY Office of Student Affairs, with other university offices, will be initiating a set of guidelines regarding the prevention, reporting, and resources available to victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, and stalking. Moving on to the city budget, Mayor Bloomberg issued his FY 2010 preliminary budget on January 30, which recommended city support for the community colleges of about $212 million. This represents about $30 million less than what was recommended in the 2009 budget. In addition to the above changes in city support for the community colleges, the 2010 preliminary budget eliminates funding for several initiatives, including the Peter F. Malone City Council Scholarships and the Blackmail Empowerment Initiative. On April 8, the mayor announced a new reduction exercise for 2010. Agencies were asked to submit additional reduction proposals totaling 4 percent of their city-supported budget. This 4 percent reduction target for CUNY totaled a little over $7 million, increasing the year-to-year gap from about $30 million to about $37.5 million. The mayor will be issuing his fiscal 2010 executive budget on May 1. We will continue our dialogue with City Hall regarding the university's financial condition. We are optimistic that we can protect the community colleges' operating budgets, considering the city's requirement of maintenance of effort for the community colleges, as well as expected increases in tuition revenue, in part because of the very spike increase in enrollment that I'll report on in just a minute. We are making a push for $160 million in city capital matching funds that have already been appropriated waiting city match. There will be a New York City Council Hearing Committee on April 28 regarding the Blackmail Initiative, SEEK, and College Discovery. Vice Chancellor Gary Moore, BMI Director Elliott Dawes, and Associate Dean James Murphy will be testifying on behalf of the university. Mr. Chairman, the 2010 state adopted budget agreed to by the governor and the New York State Legislature calls for an increase of $71 million over the current year for the City University of New York. State aid is decreased by a little over $44 million, offset with $115 million from additional tuition and fee revenue based on a rate increase of 15 percent for resident full-time students. In December '08, the University Board of Trustees authorized an increase in tuition of up to $300 per semester for senior college undergraduate resident students and up to $200 per semester for community college resident students. This action was necessary in order to finance the university's ongoing commitments as part of its 2010 budget request and to meet obligations established by the state as part of the budget. We will therefore be implementing a $300 semester increase for senior college undergraduate resident students, but we will come in below the $200 to $175 for community colleges for resident students, and a 15 percent across the board for all other categories. This move to reduce the burden on our community colleges This move to reduce the burden on our community colleges, I think, is the right thing to do, because these represent the students whose financial profile is probably the most tenuous, as we have in the university. But in order to mitigate the effect of this tuition increase and assist those students who will be at risk of continuing their matriculation due to the higher tuition costs, the Board of Trustees, upon my recommendation, approved the funding of a $10 million fund to provide financial assistance to our students. This is without precedent in this university, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to go into a little detail, just to give you some background, as we look at other sources of support, especially at the federal level. This initiative that I will describe in just a moment is not designed for students who are receiving full tuition assistance, tuition assistance money under the TAP Financial Aid Program, and Pell awards, since their existing financial aid support, will not be jeopardized by the tuition increase. Currently, about 90,000 CUNY students receive federal Pell grants, and about 75,000 students are granted TAP awards by New York State. The federal government increased Pell awards in the current year by $421 to $4,731 per year. This amount will rise by $619 to $5,350 for fall 2009, and by an additional $150 to $5,500 per year for the fall of 2010. Overall change in awards from fall '07 to fall '10 is $1,190, or a little over 27 percent of base. CUNY's homegrown financial aid program will encompass several measures aimed at benefiting as many students as possible, folding in the awards that I've just mentioned. Let me talk about the various components of what has been designed, and which we will have guidelines printed very soon, so that all students understand. The first of the component, first component of our financial aid program is a partial tuition waiver. We're going to allocate about $4,750,000 to the colleges, so that they can provide assistance to students in meeting increased tuition rates. Up to 25,000 students will benefit from these partial tuition waivers. On average, the effective rate of the tuition increase for this population of students will be reduced by approximately a third. The second will be a tuition payment plan, that we will allocate about $1 million to finance. The university currently contracts with Sally Mae, a financial services corporation, for a tuition payment plan that allows students to defer tuition by five payments over five months. All students are eligible to participate. Approximately 30,000 students are now enrolled per semester. Currently, Sally Mae requires an $18 fee each semester to participate in the program. The university is part of the student financial aid initiative, will cover the full cost of this $36 fee. CUNY will also significantly promote participation in the program and modify the payment plan by a combination of reducing the percentage of payment required in the first month and spreading payments over other months in order to ease the burden of the tuition increase for students. Textbooks is a big issue today, and a serious issue for financing the purchase of textbooks by many of our students. We will be allocating $2 million out of this fund that we are creating to help explore and promote options for assisting students with the cost of textbooks. CUNY will significantly promote the purchasing of books online. State Controller Denapoli recently issued a report, which found that CUNY students can save up to 40 percent of the cost of textbooks if they purchase those textbooks through vendors that they can online. Controller Denapoli's report indicated that undergraduate students can be expected to pay up to $800 per semester on textbooks. By exploring avenues of, other avenues of textbook purchases, students can save as much as $2,000 over a four-year period. The university will encourage colleges to utilize used textbooks with more frequency. A number of possible programs have been identified, including following a model developed by other colleges, in which it is required that the same textbook be used in core courses for at least a year. Colleges will be encouraged to develop student co-op programs to seek or donate used textbooks, so that they can be provided to fellow students at a reduced course. The university will encourage college bookstore discounts, supported by the reduction of college commissions. CUNY will fund additional library purchases for electronic books. The university will also allocate funds to college libraries, so that the very costly textbooks can be made available to students by direct loan. And lastly, CUNY will develop a philanthropy matching program, so that private donors can help students cover their textbook obligations. And the last component is a student employment program, that I discussed with trustee Carol Robles-Ramon just the other day. About a $2 million allocation for this particular program. We, the university, participates in the Federal Work Study Program, which requires us to match federal funds for student part-time employment. In fiscal 2010, additional federal funds are available for this program. The university, therefore, will increase its match in order to provide more employment opportunities for students. Currently, about 7,300 students participate in the Federal Work Study Program, CUNY-wide. With the increased match, it is expected that another 700 students can be afforded employment opportunities, bringing the total participation university-wide to slightly over 8,000. This will allow more students to participate in the program and/or increase the hourly rate that students receive. CUNY will use the Federal Work Study Program as a model to develop its own student employment program. Students will be hired as student aides to work in such areas as tutoring, computing help desks, tech labs, libraries, and registrations. One of the saddest times that I've had recently, at a council of presidents meeting, occurred when some presidents indicated to me and other members of the chancellery that they are having more and more students appear on their campuses hungry. They have not had breakfast, or may not have, would have missed a meal the night before. And in light of the difficult economic times facing very low-income students, I've asked Vice Chancellor Gary Moore and the Office of Student Affairs to develop a program to focus on issues of hunger, nutrition, and homelessness where appropriate, and we're going to fund this initially at about a quarter of a million dollars. A coordinating council will be created, co-chaired by distinguished professor of public health at Hunter College and the Graduate School, Nicholas Freudenberg, and university dean for student affairs, Chris Rosa. Members of the council will include student affairs professionals from the campuses, as well as faculty with expertise in public health, government benefits, and nutrition, and other relevant areas. So, adding up all of these programs is about a $10 million program that they were going to carve out of our resources and apply to help our neediest students in this university cope with the current economic climate. Obviously, we have limited resources to do this, but so also to mitigate against the further burden of students that are not covered under TAP fully, or will not have access to Pell grants, to be able to keep them enrolled at the college and help them with their financial matters. Mr. Chairman, let me just move on to the recovery, the American Recovery and Investment Act. This, obviously, is something that we have paid particularly close attention to, and as I mentioned earlier, the presidents, right before this meeting, were given a very thorough briefing, but I'd like to just touch on some of these matters for the board, so that you understand fully how the university is responding to the law that was signed by President Obama on February 17th, and offers many opportunities for CUNY campuses and faculty. Funding for us is concentrated primarily in the areas of health, energy, basic and applied science research, science facilities, workforce development, and education. CUNY is undertaking a coordinated effort to maximize Recovery Act resources by providing information and support across the university community. Immediately after passage of the Recovery Act, I asked Vice Chancellor Iris Weinsholl to represent CUNY on the New York State's Economic Recovery and Reinvestment Cabinet, and I asked Executive Vice Chancellor Alan Dobrin, with the assistance of Deputy Chief Operating Officer for Management Services, Bert Sax, to coordinate CUNY's response. Let me just briefly indicate some of the things that we have done. First, we created a working group of vice chancellors and other senior staff who meet bi-weekly, to ensure that opportunities are identified and responses coordinated. We developed the Funding Opportunities website. This site, accessible via the CUNY and Office of Academic Affairs homepages, provides an overview of the Recovery Act, details funding opportunities, and provides links to federal recovery work pages, and offers the opportunity for feedback and questions. More than 35,000 faculty and staff were alerted about the Funding Opportunities website via an email blast. We are also coordinating information available to CUNY's federal, state, and city representatives, and at the federal level, we are being represented by Cassidy and Associates. We infused a model level of resources to support individual faculty members, who will be submitting applications. We are assisting CUNY offices with grant writing in areas including campus security, access to broadband services, and teacher education. Vice Chancellor Jillian Small has provided leadership by developing the Recovery Research website, which highlights research opportunities and information on CUNY's research office support for the recovery effort. She hosted a town hall meeting on March 12th, attended by over 150 faculty. We have sent research office representatives to meet with faculty at senior campuses, disseminated a Recovery Act news brief, we're offering assistance to faculty in proposal development, and we're taking the lead on funding applications for several large construction projects and equipment. While that is going on, Senior University Dean for Academic Affairs, John Mogalescu, is spearheading the development of multiple workforce development programs in collaboration with New York City and New York State agencies, including jobs plus, providing comprehensive workforce services at public housing sites, and training and job placement in healthcare, nursing, and for low-income individuals. Vice Chancellor Weinsholl has identified multiple projects for potential funding through direct federal grants and block grants to the state and city, including upgrading all cooling, heating, and electrical infrastructure at Bronx Community College, and providing a capacity for future growth, and constructing a new academic building to replace the existing Clickcord Building at New York City College of Technology. And Associate Vice Chancellor and Chief Information Officer, Brian Kohn, will be requesting funding to extend the fiber optic network to campuses in Brooklyn, Queens, Staten Island, and Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island. Alexandra Logue, our interim Executive Vice Chancellor, is coordinating a multi-campus proposal to enhance an existing model of teacher preparation in high-needs subject areas. Vice Chancellor Moore, in collaboration with the DOE, is planning to assist disabled students to transition successfully in college. And lastly, Deputy Chief Operating Officer Ron Swalter is focusing on projects related to alternative energy sources, including battery storage, electric smart grid development, electric vehicles, and solar energy. So we've been very busy and very involved about the, using the stimulus money that is out there, and hopefully, this university will improve as a result of that. Let me move briefly to enrollment updates. The news is very, very impressive. Freshman applications are up by 12 percent, and transfer applications are up by over 30 percent. So far this year, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the number of applications to CUNY from exam schools, like Stuyvesant, Bronx High School of Science, Brooklyn Technical High School, Staten Island Technical High School, are up smartly, more so than we have seen in, probably in the history of this university. So far this year, more students with SAT scores in excess of 1,200 or better have applied than in all of last year's fall admissions cycle, and more than in any prior fall in our history. Early decision applications at Macaulay Honors College are way up this year, from 241 to 360 this year, and the number and percentage of applications from out of New York State has continued to rise, and is up again this year. You've heard about all of the awards that our faculty and students have received. This year, CUNY received the most National Science Foundation fellowships in its history. Five. This is without, we've never received as many National Science Foundation scholarships as we have this year. My notes tell me that we have four CUNY students being confirmed as Urban Fellows, but I just received an email before walking into this room, and it's now five, the most that we have ever had in our history. Of the 15 Jeanette K. Watson fellowships that were announced, 10 are CUNY students, and of those 10, six are Macaulay Honor College students. And in the past five years, CUNY has received and won three Rhodes scholarships, and we can go on and on and on. This is something that all of us should be deeply proud of. Of the, of three of the 19 finalists of the New York City Science Fair, who will represent the city at the International Fair, will be attending CUNY this fall. We've never seen numbers like this before, and you've heard about all of the additional honors that were reported by some of our trustees. Let me, in the interest of time, let me just move on to mention a few things, and then I'll finish, Mr. Chairman. I'll finish, Mr. Chairman. All of you know, we had a very successful Invest in CUNY press conference that the chairman and I conducted on March 25th. We announced a new target of $3 billion for the university. We announced also that the original target of $1.2 billion was received about three and a half years earlier than we had anticipated. And I want to take a moment just to thank the presidents that are here tonight, because it is the president that really is the one largely responsible on a campus for generating these resources. So a very well, a very good job by all of you, and I deeply appreciate that. We continue to plan for a new community college at the university, and I'm pleased that the Gates Foundation announced a $500,000 grant to assist this effort, and we expect to announce some other grants to help us in that as well. Mayor Bloomberg, during a recent speech at the Center for American Progress in Washington, D.C., named two CUNY projects that he supported. The ASAP program and CUNY Prep, among the, what he considers the very successful pilot projects, and we are deeply grateful to Senior University Dean John Mogalescu for his exemplary leadership on both of these initiatives, as well as ASAP Director Donna Linderman, and the six community colleges who really rose to the occasion. So the presidents of our community colleges, thank you for really embracing ASAP, and again, deeply grateful for your strong support. We have formed a task force to look at the possible establishment of a new school of pharmacy that we hope to develop at York College, and that is moving along very nicely. Today is the first day of the Seventh Citizenship Now Call-In Public Service Partnership with CUNY and the Daily News. We have already served over 60,000 immigration, immigrant families, and this was the brainchild of our own Jay Hirschenson, and I think we ought to give Jay. We have launched the CUNY Summer in the City. The tagline here is "2009 Classes at 2008 Prices." That sort of is very lyrical. I think Jay came up with that as well. So we're moving ahead and really keeping this university open throughout the summer, and hopefully, more and more students will use that opportunity to improve their retention and accelerate their efforts to get their degrees. Like to commend Vice Chancellor Gary Moore and Dean Anthony Tambori on their coordination of relief efforts for the families of the victims of the terrible earthquake that we saw in Italy recently. Like to congratulate President Dolores Fernandez on receiving the Alfred G., the Los Santos Junior Distinguished Leadership Award from the American Association of Hispanics in Higher Education. Like to congratulate President Eduardo Marti on his election to a three-year term on the American Association of Community College Boards of Directors, and I am very pleased to inform you that CUNY won not one, but two New York Emmys from the National Academy of Television and Sciences, one for CUNY TV's Nuueva York, and we really have to applaud trustee Hugo Morales. The other award was for preserving the past, building for the future, the work on the Newman Vertical Campus at Baruch College. I really would like to specially thank, obviously, chancellor, Vice Chancellor, Senior Vice Chancellor Jay Hirschenson, Bob Isaacson, who directs CUNY TV with such aplomb. Mike Arena, I feel like I'm accepting an award at the Emmy. Video editor Annette Calderon, and Neil Rosenfeld. Hugo Morales asked a number of the people to stand, but let me just tell you who they are. Jerry Colson, who is the senior producer, Carmen Vidal, the producer, Jose Luis Ortega Goza, the producer, Diana Vargas, producer, Carmen Bolosa, host, and Patricio Lirzundi, host. So. And, Mr. Chairman, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. Are there questions for the chancellor on his report? All right, we'll turn now to policy items requiring a vote. I'd like to move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for April 27, 2009. You have copies at the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries. I would like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of February 23rd, 2009. You have a copy of the draft minutes in Section 2 of your meeting book. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments to the minutes, revisions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, those minutes are approved. Now we'll turn to our reports of our committees. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. May I call on trustee Joseph Lotte?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on April 6, 2009, and approved the following resolution. Calendar item 3A is a resolution calling for the Board of Trustees to authorize colleges of the City University of New York to purchase high-end scientific equipment under any existing state of New York, or city of New York, or Department of Education of the City of New York, contract or pursuant to a contract that results from an appropriate procurement process, and then includes contract terms and conditions that have been approved by the Office of General Counsel. Such purchases shall not exceed the total cost of $3 million during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2010. This resolution enhances the opportunities for the faculty or the faculty to obtain state-of-the-art scientific equipment, equipment to further advance instruction and research during CUNY's decade of science. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of this item.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions on this purchase of scientific equipment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Calendar item 3B is a resolution authorizing the City University of New York to adopt a revised schedule of tuition and fee charges for students in the John Jay College' new online Master of Public Administration Inspector General Program effective Fall 2009. This will be the college's first degree available online. The students enrolled in the program will pay the prevailing in-state tuition for graduate students. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3B.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions on this revised schedule? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Calendar item 3C is a resolution authorizing the General Counsel to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College for the installation of a new telephone system under the existing New York State contract pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed the total estimated cost of $600,000 chargeable to the City Capitol Budget. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3C.
Happy to second it. Are there questions about the LaGuardia College telephone system? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Following the approval of the action items by the committee, Cambridge Associates, the university's investment consultants, reviewed for the investment subcommittee the recent portfolio performance for the period ending February 28, 2009. In addition, Cambridge discussed a recent search for an emerging markets equity manager and provided a rationale for recommending, for the recommendation to hire Aberdeen Asset Management. In addition, Mr. Chairman, I wish to report that the Board Audit Subcommittee was presented by the independent audit firm of KPMG with the results of the A133 Audit of Federal Financial Programs and a review of the internal control procedures. I'm pleased to report that the audit yielded a clean and unqualified opinion from the CPA firm. Further, Vice Chancellor Malave then proceeded to give us a report on the current status of the state's adopted budget and the New York City preliminary budget. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. May I call on trustee Wellington Chen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its April meeting, the committee approved eight policy matters. Calendar number 4A, City College, MS in Sustainability in the Urban Environment. This innovative program responds to the rapid-growing interest of industries and students in offering interdisciplinary sustainability curriculum that integrates architecture, engineering, and science. Students will be prepared to solve a wide range of problems related to sustainable development of water, land, air, food, energy, construction, and transportation. They will be ready for careers in governmental and nonprofit agencies, sustainability industries, and research. Calendar number 4B, City College MA in the Study of the Americas. This interdisciplinary liberal arts program examines ways in which the Americas, including North, Central, and South America, have been constructed in the past and redefined in the present. The program will prepare students for work in a variety of fields related to international relations. It is also designed to attract provisionally certified secondary education teachers who need to earn an advanced degree before obtaining permanent certification. Calendar number 4C, Baruch College, MS in Entrepreneurship. This program is designed to the meets of the needs of those who have backgrounds in entrepreneurial ventures, are part of family businesses, or are interested in starting their own business. The curriculum includes courses in management, human resources, marketing, finance, and law, and equips students with the knowledge and skill needed to start and grow a business. Calendar number 4D, New York City College of Technology, Bachelor of Technology in Industrial Design Technology. This program equips students with cutting-edge skills in computer-aided drafting and other industry-standard tools, preparing students for careers in manufacturing and industrial design. The program may also serve as a solid foundation for graduate study in engineering, technology, and industrial design fields. Calendar number 4E, the John Jay College of Criminal Justice, BA in Gender Studies. This interdisciplinary program examines the constructs of gender in the context of social institutions, laws, and policies. The rigorous curriculum emphasis emphasizes the critical and analytical skills needed to address complex social injustice issues related to gender. Graduates may go on to a variety of careers with governmental or nonprofit organizations, or pursue graduate or professional studies such as a law degree. Calendar number 4F, Hunter College, MFA in Playwriting. This program emphasizes creative writing and play production. It will prepare students for careers as playwrights or related careers in theater. The program is supported by a significant private donation that will enable every student to have his or her play produced, and will support the recruitment of prominent critics and playwrights to serve as visiting faculty. Calendar number 4G, Queens College, BA in Chinese. This program prepares graduates to have a high-level mastery of Mandarin Chinese, as well as knowledge of Chinese history, culture, and literature. Given that Mandarin Chinese is now one of the fastest-growing languages in the United States, community interest in this program is high. Students will be well-prepared for graduate studies in a number of fields, including education. Calendar number 4H, Queens College, BA in Classics. This rigorous liberal arts program emphasizes cultural knowledge in the history, art, literature, and philosophy that forms the understanding of the classical heritage of Western civilization. The program serves a solid foundation, solid preparation for professional study or the graduate studies in fields such as social studies or philosophy. It may also be taken as a second major by students in humanities. Students' interests in pursuing an academic career in classics will be advised to use their electives toward intense study of Greek and Latin. And I'd like the Executive Vice Chancellor Lotte to elaborate on that item.
Okay, thank you, trustee Chen. I just wanted to note that we will be following up on Chairman Schmidt's friendly amendment to this resolution, that the faculty who have been in charge of formulating this excellent classics major consider whether a year of Latin as an essential element of the major would strengthen the academic quality of the major, and report back to the committee at some point their conclusion.
Okay. Item, thank you. Item 4A and through 4H were approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the board.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions on any of the items from the committee? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, those carry.
Information items. Executive Vice Chancellor Logue reported on two information items. First, she informed the trustees of the recent unanimous approval of the CUNY 2008-2012 master plan by the New York State Board of Regents. Second, she shared further data on the dramatic increase in student enrollments, which by Fall 2009 are expected to surpass the all-time record high from 1973. This increase in enrollment is due, on the one hand, to the current economic climate, and on the other hand, to the growing reputation of CUNY academic programs. Our reputation plus low tuition rates makes, make our programs particularly attractive. A number of innovative solutions are being discussed in order to accommodate the unprecedented levels of student applications without jeopardizing academic quality. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At its meeting on April 6, 2009, the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered the following item, which I now present to the board for approval. Item 5A, amendments to the governance plan of Bronx Community College. There are three separate categories of amendments. First, in order to expand the number of job titles in the Registrar's Department eligible for membership in the Senate, the proposed amendments would allow an individual in the Higher Education Officer Series in the Registrar's Department to be elected to membership in the Senate. Second, the proposed amendments would modify the Membership of the Senate Committee on Instruction and Professional Development to mandate election of a representative from each academic department in lieu of an at-large representation. The amendments also clarify that the Vice President of Academic Affairs, or his or her designee, holds membership on the committee, and likewise, that the Vice President of Student Development, or his or her designee, is a member of the committee. Third, the amendments would add a new provision providing the Council of Chairs with the authority to review issues and responsibilities relevant to the administration of the academic instructional departments, and to make recommendations to the college president, college senate, and faculty council concerning those issues. The proposed amendments have been approved by the college senate and are recommended by the college president. Mr. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll hear next from the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I call on trustee Jeff Weisenfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered 11 items at its meeting of April 6. These action items are listed in the board meeting as calendar items 6A through 6K. Item 6A is a resolution authorizing the design and construction for the facade and reconstruction of window replacement at Worries Hall on behalf of New York City College of Technology. The Worries Hall facade is unstable and in need of this renovation. The resolution authorizes the design and construction to rebuild the facade and replace the windows. Item 6B is a resolution Item Six B is a resolution authorizing an amendment to a prior resolution for the design of the canopy at the Southwest Entrance Plaza of the Newman Vertical Campus at Baruch College. The resolution amends a prior resolution for the design of the canopy at the Southwest Entrance Plaza of the Newman Vertical Campus to reflect an increase in the previously-approved construction budget from four-point-eight million to six-point-four million. Primary reason for the increase is that the original price budget did not include the plan for or select the company for erecting the canopy once delivered. The canopy is being designed and built in Germany by a company that has no U.S. partner to erect such canopy once delivered. Since the original resolution, Dassni has contracted with Turner Construction to work with the company in Germany and to take possession of the canopy and install it once it arrives. Item Six C is a resolution authorizing a construction contract for perimeter reconstruction on behalf of Queensborough Community College. The campus's perimeter is currently defined by chain-link fencing, which is in serious disrepair. The resolution will authorize construction of new wrought-iron perimeter fencing with modernized electronic gating, a new main entry gate with a camera security system, and a new signage for the campus. Item Six D, resolution authorizing construction contract for renovation of the Shepherd Hall facade on behalf of the City College of New York. This contract is for the partial historic renovation of the exterior facade at Shepherd Hall, replacement of some structural steel, the bell tower ramp, and windows, and for a new entry door. Item Six E is a resolution authorizing the reconstruction of Fitterman Hall on behalf of the Borough of Manhattan Community College. This resolution authorizes the remediation and deconstruction work necessary to remove the damaged building and the programming, design, and construction work necessary to replace it with a new building to include much-needed space for college programs. Item Six F is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction-manager-build-a-contract with the firm of TDX Construction Corporation for the renovation of the Carroll Street Pool Facility on behalf of Medgar Evers College. The pool in the Carroll Street Building is unusable in its current condition and has been closed for three years. Using the services of a CM-BILL contract, the university can expedite the necessary renovations to restore an operational pool facility to the college and the community by October two thousand and nine. Item Six G is a resolution authorizing a construction contract with Mitchell Gargola Architects for design and construction-related services required for the new science building complex, Phase One, on behalf of Brooklyn College. The resolution will authorize a contract with the architectural consultants, Mitchell Gargula, to provide the con, the design for new state-of-the-art teaching facility as well as construction support services during the construction phase of this project. Item Six H is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction-manager-build-a-contract with the firm of Hill International for the new Performing Arts Center at Gershwin Hall, also on behalf of Brooklyn College. The new Performing Arts Center will be built on the site of the existing Gershwin Hall facilities that have outlived their usefulness to, to the college. This resolution will authorize a contract with Hill International to demolish Gershwin Hall and to provide construction and management services necessary for building the new Performing Arts Center. Item Six I is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement at Sixteen Court Street in Brooklyn on behalf of the CUNY Central Administration. The building at Sixteen Court Street provides ready-to-use office space that can accommodate the pressing space needs of the Office of Academic Affairs and Human Resources Management on a short-term basis until permanent quarters can be made ready. The lease will be for three years. Item Six J is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement at the CND Building Bellevue Hospital on behalf of the CUNY Central Office. CUNY and NYU are partnering on a state-of-the-art medical simulation center with significant focus on first responder and emergency management training. Facilities to house the center have been identified at Bellevue Hospital's CND Building at four-sixty-two First Avenue. CUNY will lease these facilities from Bellevue and then execute a sublease of these facilities to NYU for the purposes of constructing the new simulation facility. Finally, Item Six K is a resolution authorizing a renewal lease agreement at five-five-five West Fifty-seventh Street on behalf of the CUNY Central Office. Since nineteen-seventy-four, CUNY has occupied space on several floors at West Fifty-seventh Street to provide administrative office and data space for the Central Office staff. The current fifteen-year lease is due to expire in July twenty-ten, and this resolution seeks authorization to renew the current lease for an additional twenty years and to modify its terms to include additional space on the thirteenth floor. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to second, uh, that long list. Are there questions for the committee on any of these facilities matters?
Yes, sir. I, I think great facilities are important for a great university, but in particular it's important to mention the Fitterman Hall item, uh, as, uh, an item that, of damage to the university in the nine-and-eleven incident. Um, it's wonderful to hear that this is going forward.
Thank you very much. Uh, are there comments or questions? All right, you have the motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, abstentions? All right, that carries. Anything further to report?
That concludes the report, Mister Chairman.
All right, um, I would like to, uh, serve notice to the Board of Actions Taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee, uh, on April sixth, two thousand and nine. We approved, uh, four items, uh, recommended, uh, by the Chancellor, uh, and we also determined unanimously that it would be detrimental to the university to delay the advancement of these matters. You have the four matters, uh, that I'm referring to listed as Items Seven A, Seven B, Seven C, and Seven D, uh, in your calendar books. Uh, finally, I'd like to move the Award of Honorary Degrees to the distinguished people listed, uh, at the conclusion of your meeting books. May I have a second on that?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That carries. Uh, this concludes the first, uh, public session that we'll have. We're going into executive session, after which we will reconvene the public meeting.